Thank you and welcome along this evening. And I would like to introduce Father Peter O'Loughlin from the Corfus Christian Parish of Belrayve. And when we start, thank you, Father Peter.
Well, I practice my prayer tonight by thinking about the very difficult situation the world is in at present. There are problems everywhere, and I do believe we live in the best place possible. And of course, also the best municipality town might have. But no doubt, we think about our good things and the blessings we have. And we pray, Lord God, we thank you for the good things we have, the good people who share so much with us, give their time, their effort and their energy. We pray also for those who are in great need, whether they be refugees, whether they be homeless people or unemployed in our own community. We ask that you would inspire and encourage each one of us to open our eyes a little more and open our hearts a little more, to do more than we're already doing, to alleviate the needs of those around us. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Apologies, apologies. Yep.
An apology from Alderman Jipman is a leave of absence.
Find my papers, I've been given how I'm on. I had them. Confirmation of the minutes, the previous meeting. Thanks, Alderman Pierce, Alderman Von Vertal. So much in all those in favour. Those against declare the motion carried unanimously. Item three, mayor's communications, I haven't got anything to report this evening. Item four, council workshops. Someone might have to move.
I'll move just a minute.
Put that motion, all those in favour. Those against declare the motion carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest of Alderman and his associates. Oh, that's quick.
Yeah, eleven point five point three, the Bayfield Street, Streets of Gatling.
Seven point three point two.
Six, tabling petitions, Mr General Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I have one petition this evening. A petition received from 238 signatures in support of the creation of a multi-use portshore trail to provide a safe, attractive walking and cycling route between Rugby and Lourdes. Table that.
Thank you. Item seven, public question time, seven point one, public questions on notice, nil. Item seven point two, answers to questions on notice, there are nil. And seven point three, answers to previous questions taken on notice, there are nil. And now item seven point four, questions without notice. Item eight, deputations by members of the public. Mr General Manager.
Mr Mayor, we have two speakers to speak. First speaker is Mr Mark Broadley of Tranmere Road, who wishes to address council in relation to a pathway at Tranmere Road.
Thank you. And before proceeding, I just start to remind the speakers that they have three minutes and a warning at two and a half meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, everything here and all of us. I have sent you emails, a lot of heads, a lot of messages, I'm not going to go out of it. I wanted you to see my face and that I'm not a ratbag or crazy person and people like that, obviously the two. My background, I've given it, but I've been in local government as an officer for some thirty-five years in transport, with a particular emphasis on community concentration. I just see that as such an important area in local government. I've seen so many mess-ups of council I work with and through, sometimes well-intentioned concentration, sometimes no concentration, it just leads to so many problems. So, when, so getting to the point, when I got a letter the other day about the proposed simple five meter wide concrete footpath between the end of Tranmere Road and where our property is, and he lost it, or was flabbergasted. It was one of those ultimate messages that said, we're about to come and put in this two book five meter wide concrete footpath, two weeks, three weeks. We had a sketch plan that cruised on, so if we were those sort of plans, I knew in one second exactly what it was. But other reasons, we had no idea what that sketch plan meant. We were worried, upset, confused. That was the first indication that any project like that was coming to our area. I think, you know, in the year 2015, when I started in, whatever, nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen ninety-five, time ago, that is the sort of thing we did. I mean, I know that it was terrible, and we got in the way to a lot of problems, lots of public moves, that sort of approach. So, the year, so that to happen in the year 2015, there's something wrong. I don't know if it's in other areas of council, it's just a nice load of things that's happened last, but it's something I think you and I probably should look at. The other thing I just want to say was decision-making process. Again, I've written a lot. But when I question officers and when I, I've spoken to Alderman, there doesn't seem to be a clear process that's been used here to develop this project. So, it's like someone's just plucked out of thin air, a project. Now, when you make decisions, obviously, as I say, now, I'm personal decision-making, is that two and a half minutes acting here? We are very careful about looking at what the problem is we've got and what the options are to solve that problem and what the costs are. And you can think in a margin infrastructure project like this, we're talking about, there would be a process where you've looked at, you know, all the options, do nothing, a gravel path, a, you know, wider gravel path, an asphalt path, a granular path with spray seal, and then a concrete path of maybe one point two minute, maybe one point five minute, maybe two point five minute. And some sort of look at the evidence for the need for it, both now and in the future. So, sure enough, you know, if there's going to be five thousand lots or ten thousand lots to develop south of this area, it might be this area. But there's nothing to show them clear decision-making process. I'd love to catch up with any Alderman wants to talk to me, you'll get a good welcome. I really appreciate what you're doing and thank you for all your efforts that you make to make this place and testing it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr David Carr of Durhamshire, who wishes to address council in relation to dogs.
In relation to dogs?
Dogs. Hello, Mr Mayor, Alderman, local officers. I'm David Carr, we're from the Durhamshire British Route of Point. Now, some five weeks ago, I was called by a homeowner because dogs were chasing some of my cattle, and he was worried about his little boy because they live adjacent to where cattle are. In the ensuing five weeks, my granddaughter's pet lamb has been torn apart. Oh, let me go back, we called the council rangers on this first occasion. So, in the chewing weeks, my granddaughter's pet lamb's been torn apart. I know one of my neighbours has lost the least three sheep, he's had the police come and put some of them down. Friday morning last, a cow was so badly mauled, the vet said it couldn't be saved. This morning at four AM, I was called, there were dogs barking up the hill, we couldn't find them. Five thirty, we think we spotted one of the dogs. In daylight, we found another dead cow. They chased down the embankment, may have broken its leg, I hope it broke its neck. This has been going on for five weeks, you've got four rangers, you've got one dog trap. I just ask you please to do something about stray dogs. It'll be a little child, or an elderly lady, or me chasing them, that'll suffer next. Thank you.
Item nine, motions on notice, item nine point one, this is a motion, Alderman McFarlane, multi-use of pathway.
Yeah, I do think in general, I've withdrawn this motion for two meetings and for the delay of meeting.
I'll take the motion. It's procedural, so put that motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried. Item nine point two, notice of motion, Alderman Walker, local government candidate's electoral expenditure. See you, Mr Walker. We have a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, acting, albeit. The key fundamental point to my motion is that donations in local government should be disclosed. This is in the community's best interest, it's in democratic principles' best interest, and ultimately, in the long term, it's in the interest of councillors to have a system where donations are disclosed. And this motion asks for LGAT to bring the matter of donations from political parties into the discussion around donations in general in the local government sector. Now, the LGAT annual conference not very long ago successfully pushed for donation disclosure, and this motion just builds on that by asking that we look to try and cut off the option that would allow political parties to become a conduit for donations, to become a mechanism to wash through or hide donations to candidates. Because it's all well and good to say candidates must disclose any donations they receive, but if at the end of this new system should get up, if all people say at the bottom of it is that, you know, ACME political party donated thirteen thousand dollars, that could well be hiding a developer or some special interest that has got in and indirectly donated to the candidate. And it might also be enjoying another advantage, which is tax deductibility. Currently, the playing field is tilt towards franchised candidates by the simple fact that the ATO currently lets a threshold maximum of one thousand dollars of campaign expenditure be claimed as a tax deduction by candidates. However, each and every financial year, an individual can donate fifteen hundred dollars to a political party, tax deductible, and that money could in turn be returned to the candidate to help support them. So, even a candidate and their spouse who could potentially donate three thousand dollars a year on four yearly cycles, that means potentially a twelve thousand dollar tax deductible level of funds that other candidates can't use because they only have their one thousand dollar threshold. So, it's not currently sorted. And I think the other point about this matter, if you look at point A, is also about consistency. I believe that local government has a really important role to play. And as such, I think it should be held to at the very least the same account as other tiers of government. And that is why if you read point A, you'll note that the council requests the state government to amend the Local Government Act and regulations consistent with legislation associated with the Legislative Council, section one sixty-two of the Electoral Act two thousand and four, to prevent donations to or expenditure by local government candidates involving political parties which endorse and/or support that candidate. So, this isn't legislatively radical proposition, this is just bringing us up to a level of consistency at another tier of government. So, I would seek your support. I'd also note that the explanatory notes are in some way not very explanatory in relation to point one. So, I wish to read into the microphone now, should this motion be successful, what that explanatory point should be that we are taking up to LGAT when they consider this motion. So, it would read, the first paragraph would read the same, which is, at the recent LGAT general meeting, a motion was passed urging the state government to support the expansion of a local government act and regulations to require candidates to disclose political parties. Second sentence, donations, yes, thank you, Alderman Chong, Deputy Mayor, I appreciate your input. The second sentence would read, the LGAT decision seeks to address donations received by candidates from political donations, not parties, but donations, however, does not address candidate donations from, instead of to, political parties in the context of a local government election. So, we don't want to see a new platinum level of disclosure that ignores political parties and they somehow become a conduit to wash through donations. And we do also want to have a fair situation where one local government candidate isn't enjoying tax deductibility benefits in their campaign that other candidates could enjoy. So, I seek your support.
I'd just like to say that councils are hopefully becoming more conscious of the importance of transparency, accountability and access, and I think there's a definite need to keep politics out of local government. An electoral advantage can undermine the goal of equity of everyone being and presenting everyone being on a level playing field. The need is for councillors at all times to take reasonable steps to ascertain whether political donations to political parties can be reasonably considered to be intended to benefit the councillor or the person seeking election for his or her campaign. If reasonably considered to be intended to benefit the councillor and his or her campaign, then donations to political parties should be treated as donations to the councillor for purposes of disclosure obligation.
Mr Acting Mayor, I fully support the motion, but I just wanted to briefly say that I think the ultimate solution to this issue would be, what I understand this council has actually reported before, and that is tax deductibility for all electoral expenses for local government candidates, if they're going to a state federal. Unfortunately, that needs to be taken up with another level of government, which, you know, is larger than the state level, and that's obviously going to be quite a big campaign, but hopefully something that LGAT would pursue on our behalf. But I fully support.
Yeah, I mean, my comments are fairly simple. If some donations must be declared and all donations should be, should have to be declared, it should not, it should be all to come, it's more like.
If this argument had been more about accountability and transparency with donations, then I might feel like I could support it. But unfortunately, I find that I feel this is too much like green fashion, which of course, nobody would do around the table because nobody else is involved in other political parties, putting their hands up to say who they're involved with like I do. However, the comment by Alderman Chong is relevant in the context that in the past, I have always declared my political donations, if you put it that way, whenever I've been asked to, and that in this, to agree to this or a format that should go to give out, we need a formula of how we put those donations into a picture and also how they relate to the individual, whether they're a part of a party or not. This is just picking, I believe, on one particular group who constantly stands as for a political party at local government elections, and I won't support this until I see something that's more broad and accountable and transparent for everybody. Because currently, the tax system doesn't do it that way, and I don't believe that we should have to either. Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. I'm very pleased that Alderman Walker has actually elaborated on his motion. I perceive that there were actually two aspects that I was focusing on, one, disclosure of donation, and two, tax deductibility, which obviously is now in danger. Going to the first point, disclosure of donation. I think it's really important to note that section one hundred and sixty-two of the Electoral Act is actually part of a raft of pieces of information and requirements, and that is actually part six of the Act which deals with electoral expenditure in respect of council elections, and that has three divisions. So, it actually has a number of sections that deal with this particular matter. And the reason that this is actually within the legislation is to look at a cap on spending. The Legislative Council, as with local government, actually has a cap on spending. And in essence, that is to allow equity so that there isn't the buying of a seat. Interestingly, the lower house does not have such a cap, and candidates are able to expend as much as they like and to have the support of parties in doing so. So, I think it's very interesting to keep that in mind. At the moment, from two thousand and five, there actually has been a five hundred dollar a year increase in that cap, and next year, the cap in the Legislative Council will be fifteen thousand five hundred. As you'd be aware, in local government, the cap is five thousand dollars for a councillor and eight thousand dollars if you're standing for either mayor or deputy mayor. So, there is a raft of requirements, and it's about fairness and equity. And as far as I'm concerned, I think it's really important that if we are actually going to look at disclosure, we look at it in a holistic way, as Alderman McFarlane has actually said. It's about equity, but it's also about transparency as far as the voter is concerned. So, as far as I'd be concerned, I think it would be really best if we actually had legislation that required candidates to actually name up whether they're affiliated or not with a party, regardless of whether they're endorsed, so that that would be made very clear on the ballot paper. I think that is one of the most important aspects. I also think that either ideally, in real time, or at least before an election, that candidates need to name up whether or not they have had donations, whether from a party, another organisation or an individual. So, I think that is really important too. I think we need to keep in mind, as I've said, the aspects of equity and transparency and natural justice. I have concern in relation to the wording of part A, because part A actually refers to endorsement and/or support. I wonder how we actually determine what support means. How do we define support? The other aspect of tax deductibility, as Alderman Hume has actually said, is a matter for another level of government, for the federal government. So, there are two aspects to this motion that I think we need to keep in mind. Thank you.
Any further speakers? If not, write a reply, Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. My motion does not restrict members of a political party or affiliates or friends of a party-endorsed candidate receiving donations. And that could still and would still be totally possible if this change were to eventually get up. What it would do is it would restrict them from hiding their donation by washing it through a political party, and it would also restrict their ability to receive a tax deductible donation that wouldn't occur to candidates that aren't working through a political party. So, those freedoms still go there, and I completely agree with Alderman Hume's point around the threshold should change, and I could go on forever and a day how the current one thousand threshold actually advantages incumbents over new aspirants, because we all often have bits of wood and old signs that we reuse each time. But the point is, I suspect it's easier to get through the eye of a needle than it is to effectively move the ATR from this point of view. I guess, in essence, in essence, ask yourself this question when you vote, does this motion improve transparency? And yes, it does. Does this motion, to some degree, to some degree, certainly it's not perfect, but does it in some degree improve equitability or equity as far as political campaigning and expenses go? And yes, it does. And for those reasons, I hope that you will support my motion.
Put the motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried. Item ten, reports from outside bodies. Item ten point one, reports from single and joint authorities, the Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, there's nothing to report. Item, the Copping Refuge Joint Authority, I have the minutes of the meetings of the twenty fifth of August and the special meeting of twenty fifth of August and the twenty seventh of August of the authority to pay the thanks. Southern Waste Strategies Authority, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. We have a meeting Thursday at Lenorkie. I'll be asking some questions about how we're going with this new approach to the question of sharing our project, I suppose, information with the schools. And also too, I will be asking some questions as to what the organisation can see as part of our ongoing process. And I have some questions, my mind, and as Deputy Chair of Swazza, I know there's a number of members around the table that have some questions in their own right to ask, but I'll be sounding out at our meeting on Thursday about where we're heading, because you will recall that we do have a window of opportunity for this financial year, and the lot will depend on the outcomes of that, of what we probably pursue as far as our project side of the arrangements and so on. I'll be forward, Mr Acting Mayor, to report to the next week.
What a corporation, haven't got anything to report at this point in time. Ten point two, reports from council and special committees of council, other representative bodies. Alderman Doust.
Mr Mayor, I'm Mr Deputy Mayor, Mr Acting Mayor. I attended the Transcendence Council History and Motion Committee twenty sixth of August, and I've got a minute here, but I would also like to inform the meaning that I actually put a request in the newsletter that we want to enter the ministry. that we want to enter the Minister for National Park and Wildlife and Parks and Wildlife. Now, the missing guns have been already bought. We are actually in the process of trying to get that, or we want to call it group up, factory, whatever. It only shows control because everybody knows the uranium's going to go to the never there if we don't do something about it. And we actually have found some of the guns.
Alderman Dowst, Alderman Thirley.
I have minutes from the Belgrade Committee that I have to call one. Thank you.
Alderman Hall, I have the minutes of the July meeting of the Water Businesses. Thank you. Further, Alderman James.
The Trails Committee meeting of the 13th of August 2015. And I would just like to draw council's attention to a decision that was made at that meeting of the 13th of August, that the Tracks and Trails Action Plan. Oh, yes, a big pardon, that the Tracks and Trails Action Plan was adopted by council. The 2015-16 budget included a link for mow downs to Rokeby Beach. Council's waiting on a response from the Police Academy. Motion that the Tracks and Trails Committee request council to negotiate an MOU with the police to progress implementation of the trail link carried. So those minutes of, or the minutes of the 13th of August 2015 are here for colleagues. More importantly, Mr Mayor, I would like to draw council's attention to the minutes of the 10th of September 2015. And my colleagues would be aware of a discussion that we had at one of our workshops in relation to this matter being referred to the Tracks and Trails at the earliest possible opportunity. And that was at our meeting last Thursday, the 10th of September, and it's with regard to the Rokeby Lord of Dog Trail. I have circulated these minutes, so I know a number of my colleagues have already seen the minutes, but I would briefly just approach from them and then ask a question of where we go from here. The motion was moved and seconded, and it was carried unanimously by the 12 people that were present at that meeting. The Tracks and Trails Committee wish council to continue discussions with the minister. The minister, as we know, is in relation to the Honourable Ring Hitting regarding access across the Police Academy land or an access from mow downs to the Fort Shaw. That's not in the motion, I'm just mentioning that to the discussion. The committee recommends that the mayor and the chair of the Tracks and Trails Committee communicate with the minister of infrastructure, requesting that the track be reconsidered in light of the previous commitments council has made to the development of the trail for the clearance and broader community. And I'm saying communication should cover elements such as establishment of the Tracks and Trails Committee, zoning and progressive planning schemes, the adoption of the action plan, et cetera. Council acknowledges, as stood out in the motion, that the academy has security requirements and is receptive to addressing these concerns through fencing and management plans. And that motion was carried unanimously. My question through you, Mr Acting Mayor, and maybe to the General Manager, is where do we go from here? I understand that the Tracks and Trails is an advisory committee we are recommending to council, and I would like to get some guidance in relation to where we go.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I think the appropriate officer should, on behalf of the Tracks and Trails Committee, report that to the next council meeting for consideration of council.
Any further reports, Alderman Von Berto?
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. I'd like to table the meeting minutes of the Bicycle Steering Committee for the 1st of June 2015 and the current seniors and citizens centre meeting for the 11th of August 2015.
Any further reports? Not. We'll move to item 11, records of officers, the weekly briefing reports of the 24th, the 31st and the 7th of September have been circulated. I'd like to, Alderman Berto and Alderman Tom, thanks. I'll put that motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 11.2, determination petition stated previously, I'll talk about that item before we proceed to the planning authority matters. Mr General Manager, item 11.72.
Mayor, just in terms of procedure, it's probably appropriate to consider item 11.7.2 prior to actually going in considering the planning authority reports. I want to view, in spite of motion from the floor, to consider bringing item 11.7.2 forward.
Alderman, here's Alderman James, and as it is a procedural motion, that motion, all those in favour, as against, declare the motion carried unanimously, and now we'll move to the planning authority. Oh, yeah, we've got to deal with it now that we've put it in that order. Yeah, so dealing with 11.72, if we could have a motion to, in relation to the interim car parking plan, please. Page 221. Alderman James.
I'd be more than happy to move a motion as listed.
And I'll second.
Alderman Von Berto. Thank you, Alderman James.
I think this is straightforward, I think it's going to tidy up a number of problems that we've had in the past, so council.
Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. I think it's a very sensible way to go. The new planning, again, or the interim planning scheme appears to have some very onerous requirements in relation to car parking. However, I think it's very important that whilst we are adopting this interim car parking plan, that we actually follow up relatively quickly, as quickly as we possibly can, with an actual car parking plan. Because we actually need some surety and some fairly strict parameters around what we are going to actually require as far as car parking is concerned. It shouldn't be done in an ad hoc manner, which in the recent past, and that's how it's appeared to be heading. Thank you.
Berto, any further speakers? If not, I'll put the motion, I was writing reply, Alderman James, if not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, those against, declare motion carried unanimously, and now move to the planning authority matters, 11.3. 11.31, development application at 151 Mornington Road, Mornington, landscaping business. Alderman Tom.
Happy to review the recommendation.
Yes, the area is owned industrially, realise that industrial and residential name, but in close proximity there can be concerns that they end this industrial and proposed operation is critical.
Billy, sorry.
Now, I noticed that there were 10 representations, but they were all very adequately dealt with within the report, and none of those fears as expressed by the representatives were needed. Thank you.
Further speakers? If not, write a reply, Alderman Tom.
This application had been previously approved, and the current one was just looking for a variation to car parking.
Motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried, and move to item 11.32, a subdivision, thanks Alderman Tom. A subdivision application at 26 White Kangaroo Road Campaign, a six lot subdivision. Billy Alderman James.
And it meets the requirements and seek council's support. Alderman Thirley.
It's important to note that the approval of this subdivision is not deemed to imply a permit for future residential use, so it's got to be judged on it, on it as it's presented to you here tonight. The proposal meets the minimum lot size of 10 hectares, and based on agricultural report, the proposed lots are still capable of a range of agricultural uses. And the existing water supply from the irrigation dam will be allocated to each lot, enabling agricultural activity. And this is without the prospect of additional water runs. Any increase in antisocial behaviour, as one of the representatives indicated, as a result of this subdivision, cannot really be substantiated. And the proposal is consistent with the outcomes of state policies, including those of the state coastal policy, and consistent with the objectives of Schedule One of Loop Loop.
Any further speakers? Alderman Tom.
I have a problem with this type of application in the context that it seeks a subdivision, whilst it's constrained with its use and residential ability. Because I wonder to what degree anybody would subdivide land into the 10 hectare lot, which cannot then be used for residential use. In the past, when I have supported the agricultural zone, it has been in the context of not supporting subdivisions of agricultural land, and I cannot find any justification for that.
Further speakers? If not, write a reply, Alderman James.
I'd like to take up that comment a moment ago, and that is that this is in a, in an area of intent. Manifest failure of that, and it's really disappointing, because this is a crucial project, and these sort of missed issues really don't help build trust for it. So the hope with deferring for one, for the next meeting is to give three weeks possibly for an SGM, for some movement, some clarification, some degree of certainty that whilst we would still move forward with that constitution, that this wouldn't just be given lip service, but would be actively addressed in the process at the same time. And the motion essentially stands as much as I support the CECL and the Determination Series, I just answered for.
Further speakers? Not. Alderman Kesh, you'd write a reply.
I think we need to place in the authority, and we need trust in it, and sound, as I said, we do need state movement. But as you've heard from Alderman Hume and Alderman Walker and Alderman James' comments about deferring for three weeks, what are we going to get in three weeks? I don't think the authority can initiate further amendments, the authority will should have to be deals with and provide certainty to state councils in three months. So why, what are we achieving by deferring for three weeks?
All those in favour? Those against? Declare the motion carried. Okay, we'll move to CECL with 11.72, the governance of the interim car parking plan. 11.73, I almost messed these up, the harem shared variation. Thank you, Alderman Hume. Alderman Von Berto.
Thank you, Mayor, I think this is fairly straightforward, it's up to the intention to extend the harem shared area to accommodate future access and past any project areas. So I hope we'll do a unanimous motion.
Any further speakers? Write a reply? No? Put motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried. Item 11.74, the dog management review.
Alderman James. Mr Acting Mayor, I've circulated a slight amendment, a hard copy, and endorsing, well, the revised dog management policy, including the schedule of declared areas, with an amendment. Have a second?
Mr Acting Mayor, the question that I seek to have included in this, what this thing includes motion, is that from the beach street access east to the second bluff, in the restricted areas under the beach section, that states dogs will be restricted from entering this part of Belgrade Beach between the hours of 10am and 6pm during the period of 1 December to 1 March each year. In other words, the status quo that currently is on the beach, other than that section where they have to be on lead to the western bluff, remains. In the preamble in our report, it was suggested that dogs would be off lead on that section of the beach 24/7, regardless of winter, summer. In other words, I'd suggest that there could be a, I know this is going out for the consultation, but if we were to allow these, that the dogs to be off lead on that section, as most of Belgrade Beach, east of this, where we've got this line through, down through Beach Street, then I think it's going to break every convention that we would possibly stand for, for allowing dogs to be on the beach in the summer months, 24/7. In other words, Mr Mayor, Acting Mayor, I'm seeking for us to maintain the status quo on that section of the beach east of the line, or that beach, beach street line, east and west, I'm trying to confuse anybody, and the west is basically to be a dog free beach 24/7.
Yes, I support this amended motion of Alderman James. There's a few issues around this, I think, and we think we indicated that 365 a day access to Belgrade Beach, each street, is what we wanted, having not supported Alderman James, this amended motion.
Further speakers, Alderman Tom.
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. At the end of the day, this is going out to consultation. So whether we agree to the amended motion or we stick to the original one, I'm sure we will get lots of answers back from the community at large. My only request is when it goes out to consultation, that, as I mentioned before, it's got a nice pretty map, or something with it, because if we've looked at this on a number of occasions and we're still confused about it, imagine what it's going to be like when it goes back to the community.
In the same vein, I think that when it goes out for consultation again, that we highlight, there will be good signage, because a lot of people have used the beach car park to access. With the new car park, it needs to be very well signed that all dogs are on lead until they reach the lead area. Now, that's not hard to do, there's some wonderful signs out there that we can copy. And if we do it in a big way and highlight it right from when we want to make the changes, then if people can easily, it's better.
Further speakers? Not write a reply, Alderman James? Seek council. Thank you. All those in favour? Those against? Thanks. And 12.1, questions on notice, nil. 12.2, answered questions on notice, nil. 12.3, previous questions on notice, nil. 12.4, flesh out notice, Alderman Berne.
Just know there's no one here, acting mayor. We're on, yes, on, no, we're on.
Yeah, they've got you anyway.
The papers said they finished tonight, is that correct, that's what we had tonight?
One new, one and one old one? No, just one new one, sorry, okay, yeah.
Alderman Doust? Alderman Kessy? Alderman here?
Acting Mayor, I just wanted to ask whether we've had any response to the concerns raised by Tangara Trail users about the interaction between, of sound management.
On the trail, around Mortimer Bay, sort of.
Yeah, emails from Jody Smith and.
Can we make sure that copies of those letters go to all Alderman?
Alderman Chalmers.
Thank you, Mr acting Mayor, and I may have missed this because I missed the workshop. In the papers, there's a letter from the minister, Mr Gutwin, in relation to the proposed MOU. And I was disappointed, but what I thought I read in there was that they were requiring us to use one of the four consultants. Exactly, that's what it reads like to me. It says basically, thou shalt use one of the consultants in appendix two. And I just wanted to find out whether there's been further discussion because obviously that's not our preferred scenario.
Through you, Mr acting Mayor, yes, we did workshop that matter. That was a draft in May year that had been provided to us. And yes, it did make that suggestion. I think I'm correct in saying you all probably got a letter today and I don't have the letter in front of me, so I'm going to sort of, you did get it, copied it today, a letter from the minister discussing it. And I've also had some subsequent discussions with the minister's office and I'm meeting with the gang tomorrow. But my quick reading of the letter from the minister today, and I'm happy for someone to tell me my interpretation was wrong, was that they still expect us to go through the process in respect of the four consultants. The letter was quite clear in saying the current contract with the consultants finishes at the end of November. Go through the process first. And the minister has clearly said to us that if you are still not happy with the proposals you get from each of those, we'll then sit down and work out who you want to actually go with.
Seems very cat productive, really, to waste the time doing that.
I agree, I understand that and that's certainly the discussion that's occurred. But.
You're two and a half minutes.
Mine, and it was bringing up the email we got.
What I was making was that.
It's cat productive, time consuming, whatever.
Yes, but given that they've got a contractual arrangement that they've entered into with those four parties until the 30th of November, there's no, we've got to go through a due process.
We'll just sit on our hands until the.
We could sit on our hands until the 30th of November as well.
It will happen, of course. Thank you, Alderman Chalmers, Alderman McCallum.
I have two questions. One, can we get an article in the next newsletter about the Tracks and Trails strategy? I just find it very difficult that a junior member, Mr Broadley, knowledge of local government doesn't seem to be in there of strategies. In his comments, it made me feel he didn't know there were big ones. And so therefore, could we get something in the newsletter highlighting the fact that we have got one and make an access to the internet off the website? And two, can we send a copy?
I told him where it was.
I think he needs a hard copy.
Alderman Walker.
Just two brief points. It's already been touched on the time when the exclusivity of the four contractors as by the minister expires, which is November. But just on top of that, council's prayer, any time to eschew using any of those consultants and self funders they plead. There's nothing that's locking us into that, it's just if we want the 50% funding. That would be my understanding. Separate to that, I don't think I was the only one that found Mr Carr's comments and issues he raised tonight deeply disturbing. I'm just wondering, we mentioned that at some point we're going to be having a workshop around certain issues to do with dog management or after hours support, et cetera. And I've raised issues with calling on you that. Can you outline when that's likely to be coming forward, or what sort of timeline that's likely to come forward to council?
Yes, I can do that. What I should also add, and John might pick me up on this, is that we have had officers out there. They're not being restricted by our after hours policy, we have had them out there. But John, are you able to elaborate on that in the UAL?
The main rationale for that is because what you adopt in the dog policy will have a profound effect on what resources we need to deliver whatever issue you adopt.
So timelines, that's still a whole matter.
No, no, no. Now, given that, let me have a look at the note that's got out for a professional forum for consultations. Not that, this will come back to the top of your brain.
And I'd really appreciate that if it was, it sounds like we'll give at least sort of two months, that minimum.
My question through you to Mr Paul, Paul, the petition that was presented tonight with 270, I think 38. Is it intended that be tabled at our next meeting with a recommendation from the officer responsible? Yeah, and can I preempt that perhaps that may be ordered, please, addressed or ordered to the minister with a view to see if we can tap into some of those funds that the minister, I'm not sure if it was the minister for tourism, Alderman Berne, or minister for infrastructure, that may in fact be able to find some funds to initiate the multipurpose pathway between Lawdardale, I mean, between Rokeby and Lawdardale.
Through you, Mr Mayor, ultimately that's a matter for council to determine at their next meeting. But the standard procedure with, or the statutory procedure with a petition is that we need to report it back to council within 42 days. So we'll endeavour to have this one on the next meeting if that's all possible. Well, I don't know if the Tracks and Trails committee follow along. But we'll try and facilitate them being on the same agenda anyway.
My second question is, I picked up a note of perhaps excessive workload from the acting manager of active management, Mr Graham, and that was that a number of projects or the Bayfield Street project will be going out external, consultant, whatever. So my question through you, as acting mayor too, Mr Graham, is that is your area able to handle the workload which we have been really churning out? And I, one don't, except the problem that those projects are important. Are you able to, I suppose, are you able to manage with the amount of workload that we are basically jiving out and have listed for the next financial year?
That concludes the, thanks, Mr Graham. And that concludes the, then we move to the closed meeting, someone like to move? Alderman here, seconded by Alderman here. I'll put that motion, all those in favour, those against declare the motion carried unanimously.